Long as thirty seconds aside.
Oh, sixty? There you go.
I like to call the meeting order from March twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. We'll start with the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, those are all signed up?
Yes.
Yeah. Approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor? Minutes of the last meeting?
I move to approve the minutes of the March sixth.
Second. All in favor? How the minister weekly update?
Alright, just um two things I want to pass them down. So this is just um we need to get these or the copy certainly doesn't do it any justice because it's black and white, but these are from Vista Print. These are um five by seven postcards. So that you guys wanted me to do a mail-in for town meeting. So this is just a postcard. It is in color. Just looking at the text, so essentially the front um just lists the school budget, the town budget, the different ordinances. On the back, we reference the refreshments, the babysitting.
This is front and back.
It's front and back. It's a postcard. If you want to see it in Vista Print card, you're welcome to. But if you want to mail it in time, we're gonna get ordering. So two, three hundred dollars for fifteen hundred or so. It's much clearer on my computer, but that's the best I could bring.
What are we doing for refreshments?
Uh so Mary Grant is going to um have breakfast and lunch available.
Okay, alright.
Yep.
They did a good job of that shit.
Yeah, they did. They had to do the job.
I think they did the year before that too, didn't they?
Yeah, they've done it for several years now. So the neighbors, all the neighbors pays for it and then the funds go to Mary Grant, so.
Okay.
Good, cool.
We want to make sure. So you can look through the order and postcards. That way we can do stickers from Trio that just say, household that, One Main Street, and we don't have to worry about individual labels. So hopefully we'll be able to close out.
I'm good with it. Yep.
Okay. Um although the, I think I got the chair. Thank you guys. It keeps going down. There's one chair that.
Put a sticker on it. Mark it.
We're gonna have to mark it.
Give it to Robin, actually.
Yeah, well.
Let Robin take care of it for us. You know what I mean.
So we are scheduled to sign the, oh, so much better. Sign the warrant tonight um. Robin made a good point to me this week. Um there is a blurb in there under the road commissioner piece regarding Fuel Act Boonies, which is closing on Easter Sunday.
Ah, when we did this, we were expecting that.
So, Boonies is, now it's possible, it's on to the guys over there that there's a sale coming possibly at some point. I mean, at this point, you have to sign the warrant. So we leave it.
Yeah. Could, could we not make a uh a change on the floor to eliminate Boonies and just say?
You could change the word, yep. Yep, that might be a good idea.
Yeah, you're allowed to remember.
Because we don't want, especially if someone else is moving in there.
Yeah. Right.
If it makes sense to go to Boonies or someplace else, they should be able to go. We shouldn't.
Right. Yep.
I mean, just to get a number.
Well, the problem is a depot is the most expensive one. So, so that would, that would, I think, I think we could reword it, tell me, make an amendment.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're all the idea.
So we'll see if it actually closes by then.
Go to.
There must be a, there must be a place somewhere where you get an average number.
Yeah, I mean.
Wait, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. We don't specify the rate, do we?
We say ex dollar over.
So what we do is we use Boonies price to go with, if Boonies hits a certain mark, then that's when we start paying the fuel surcharge.
Right.
Oh, I see.
So we use that as a reference, but like, like Ed says, we use a depot, but depot's like fifteen cents higher than everybody else. So, you know, they're a lot more expensive.
There must be a uh.
So it says this will be based on the fuel price at Boonies in Shapley every Sunday.
Fuel ramp, wherever. Yeah.
Such price will be determined the fuel allowance for the following weeks to want.
Yeah, we could.
Alright, so I mean, we've, we've noted it. We'll see if it actually closes. We'll see if somebody actually does.
They may be back with it by then anyways.
Yeah.
Fingers crossed. Okay, just a point. Make a little bring that, so.
Thank you.
Alright, that's all for me tonight.
Never even thought of that.
No.
Okay, where are we? Are you all, what's that?
Yeah, that's it.
Oh, Department of Health Community Chair Updates. Okay, the uh, the is on updates. Tom?
Um had a chance to uh do some interviewing for a position that we're hiring as the Director of Finance. Um pretty much it this week.
Ed?
I'll go ahead.
Dan?
No, nothing is on that either.
Um we do have a meeting uh with.
Sibago.
Sibago, what, what's that?
Workshop next Wednesday at five.
Yep.
I did reach out to Jay Ward again because um he's invited the road committee and the transfer station knows. We did tell the rec that.
Sam is, Sam is aware of it.
Uh, no, you told me it wasn't gonna be on there.
Oh.
And we only had a couple of those too.
You pulled that off. You're right, you're right. Okay.
Right. We only have that one.
The third one I brought it up in his record. I forgot I told you to do that. Yeah.
There is something else I'd like, you done, there is something else I wanted to mention that um I've been working on uh putting together some information for town meeting that will explain um sort of what's happening with the tax rate. Um we've never done that, to the best of my knowledge, so I just, you know, wanted you to be aware of that and make sure you guys were okay with it. Uh but I think um when people are approving the budget, they ought to get a sense of what the tax rate will be.
Yep.
And so we'll try to get something relatively concise and straightforward that at the beginning of the meeting, maybe take fifteen minutes and just talk through that. Does that make sense to everyone?
Is that a handout that we can, that can be available to advance or?
It certainly can be a handout, yes.
I'm just thinking that we have the town budget, so we can put that with the town money.
Yeah, I, yes.
Yeah, I should be right with that when you pick up your paper and a little voting thing.
You want?
It is new and so, you know, maybe this isn't the, the right way to do it, but I know we've talked individually about this, but I, I think it would be good to,
No, no.
I think it's good.
Just make sure we're all on the same page about it and, and the community knows about it as well.
Yep. Well, it puts all the cards on the table. Everybody can see everything in front of you.
I, you know, I think they ought to have it.
I like it.
I think it makes sense.
Okay.
Yep.
Good?
Yep.
Good? Okay, uh so I have no, I guess, old business, uh new business resignation.
Uh so we received a resignation um regarding the warrant of finance effective today. This was dated March fifteenth um from Phil Caruso.
Make, uh make a motion to accept it with regret.
Second.
All in favor?
Excuse me.
Okay, appointment.
Alright, so with that resignation, um this is where it gets kind of tricky because you're signing the warrant tonight, but we've got some check, touch base with legal, make sure we're on the same page. So the ordinance says that if a regular member resigns or see the game comes vacant in any way, the alternate member with the same expiration date gets moved up. Who is Charlie Hydeck? So Charlie, effective once you've signed this, will be the regular member. So how, so I've gone through and changed the warrant. What's the matter?
Charlie chose as not to be a regular member.
So.
Because of uh personal, you know, commitments he has.
So I'm gonna interject. Based on the ordinance, you guys don't have the authority nor do I.
Well, really, it really, no.
He's gonna take the seat until June. If he chooses not to get renominated at the April town meeting, he can, or he can ask for the alternate, but
That makes sense.
For the sake of tonight, he needs to be appointed.
So until June and there's not gonna be, shouldn't be any meetings anyway, so doing for nothing anyways.
That's right. No, that should work perfectly.
Hold on, hold on. Uh he, can't we give him a time, a, you know, a week uh to let him know that this would be, this would be happening, maybe at next week's meeting? And if he chooses not to move into that position, then we would take some different action.
There's an ordinance that says, the warrant of finance ordinance voted in by the people clearly says that any opening on the warrant of finance can only be filled this way and it specifically says that, I, I mean.
Alright, fine. I guess there's no, as you point out, there are no meetings. It's just if somebody doesn't want it, it seems kinda crazy for us to appoint them into that position.
Just to see during this poll.
And he's only been having for a few months.
I mean, it said.
That's what we gotta do.
Right. I mean, the opening of a committee position due to a member resignation or any other reason shall be filled in the following manner. A standing member position is vacant, which it is with the resignation. The alternate member elected with the same term expiration shall assume the vacant standing member's position for the remainder of the term, thereby leaving the alternate member position vacant.
Okay.
I mean, it's an ordinance. It's not a policy. We really can't trump it.
Yep.
Alright.
I mean, I'll.
Fine. And I did try to reach out to him. I don't have a valid number. We tried calling him to go over with him.
He's that guy who got a hold of.
So nevertheless, he'll be appointed. If he chooses not to be sworn in, we'll deal with it at a town meeting.
Yep.
Um but that is the appointment for the ordinance.
Oh, we've already taken action?
Oh, we haven't made, did we make a motion?
No.
No, I thought he made, made a motion with regrets.
That was.
That was a resignation.
Oh, okay.
So do I hear a motion on uh moving Mr. What's that?
So move take. I got Charlie, Charlie added to the vacant warrant of finance committee position.
Second. All in favor? Okay. Okay. Freedom of Information Policy Update.
So in front of you, you have um.
I'm sorry.
Well, the camera's picking up everything you guys are talking, so it does the whole room now, so.
Goes out in the airways, no matter what you're saying, so.
Well, I was just asking how you get on the warrant finance committee?
Well, when we get down to public comment, you can come up and ask us that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Freedom of Information Policy Update, this is just a first read for you this evening. Um the last, last time we had a slew of freedom of informations, I asked the town's attorney to review it because there were pieces in our policy that referenced hourly rates that we could charge if it was in excess, but that hourly rate has been changed by state statute. So I asked him to remove all of those, put the statute in there so that if the statute changes, we just reference that rather than a rate. And at the same time, he reviewed the whole policy. So that's a red line policy, so you can just review it for next week and we'll have to get signatures then.
I'm curious, what was the actual increase?
Uh, it went, I think it went from fifteen to twenty dollars an hour after, after three hours.
What was the last question?
Oh, it was fifteen, I think, last year. So.
It still doesn't cover.
You know, and it doesn't, but one of the things that they changed too is that they can request the, request electronically. So when we look at um, you know, the last freedom of information that the Jason was dealing with, you know, piles and piles of files, he had to go through and copy all of that. We can't charge him copying if they ask for it electronically. So, yeah, so it's kind of ups and downs, but.
So whatever, I like to explain to everybody that whenever there's an information act, um you know, the employees are making a lot more money than what we're allowed to charge for, so we lose money every time that someone goes fishing.
And we have to give a couple hours free.
Yep, so.
So let me know if you have any concerns on that.
Okay. Sideboard.
Okay. So the only change since you guys have looked at this is that Article Two now reads to choose three members of the warrant of finance for a two-year term, Leslie Berlin, Charlie Hydeck, in parentheses, Phil Caruso's original seat, and Ray Mano Lopez, terms are expiring. And then to choose one alternate member for the warrant of finance for a two-year term. Open seat term is expiring, previous Charlie Hydeck seat. So you do have an alternate open now. You're certainly welcome to advertise it and fill it through June thirtieth, but in two weeks, somebody's gonna get elected to it at a town meeting. So my opinion would be to wait, but that's up to you. Other than that, it's done. School has proofed their numbers. The board has approved all the recommendations. We've gone over it the best we can.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We approved the warrant um as presented. Oh, page is through thirty-four, one through thirty-four.
Second. All in favor? Okay, done deal.
Um, never mind, I'll take it offline. Oh, is that? You know, it, it might be nice just to have uh like a table of content that would just list the warrants and so if somebody wants it with a page number next to it. So somebody wants to find.
Next year.
Next year. That's why I was gonna take it offline.
Um.
Okay, there you go.
Take it away until next year.
That, that's fine. We'll do it next year. Thanks.
No, I thought she was gonna pass it.
I think she didn't have anything to throw.
They're packing up the empty stuff.
Trying to see you, dog.
Yeah, I know.
You know, that would be a good idea, especially if you're looking at something later on and like trying to find something.
Yeah, you just might, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Sir?
Um who's got, who's got the warrant?
Ooh, were you?
Oh, okay.
I don't know why you passed it to me. Okay, safety grant.
So the um fire department for the last several years has applied for this Ed McDonald Safety Enhancement Grant. Uh we did receive two thousand dollars back in twenty twenty-one. Um it's something that we can get up to three thousand dollars for the application. Um the fire department is looking for some cold water emergency suits, throw ropes and life vests, which is one of the items listed. It's something he had planned on purchasing uh with some of his line items anyways, so he's just looking for permission to.
Is this something you have to match grants or anything?
No, so, no, I, no, it's no um, there's no matching. It's up to three thousand though, and if he spends, you know, they only gave him two thousand,
Straight up. Okay.
He would spend the other, the additional.
Which he was planning on doing anyways, right.
Yep, that's awesome.
So the budget relief.
So he, he's just looking for permission to apply for the article, so he don't need anything from you.
Absolutely.
Awesome, not for dog. Okay, public comment. Mr. Rido?
Mr. Rido?
Ooh, ooh, down at the start.
Mr. Waterhouse.
Yes, Mr. Witcher?
Oh, Mr. Waterhouse.
Yes, Mr. Witcher.
How you doing?
I'm doing fine.
Good.
Uh Tom, you mentioned that uh you did a couple interviews for the finance director position? Any information on that?
No, no, I'm sorry, there isn't. We don't have a hire yet, so there's nothing I can talk about there.
Uh second question. Uh I know that uh back in February, you appointed a interim town treasurer?
Yes.
Uh why isn't the treasurer position being advertised as being open?
Would you like me to take that one?
Go ahead.
Yeah. Um we are looking at the uh combination of, we actually have two positions that are sort of open. One we're advertising for, one we're not. I think it's fair to say we're assessing the finance function within the town and looking to how to optimize that, to get the best results and also at the, at the best cost. And so there are options being considered that, there are many options given what could happen there, and the board has not had a chance to uh discuss that in detail or prepare to talk about it.
So does that mean that the finance director would be also taking care of the treasurer duties?
That is one of the possibilities.
Uh under state law, town has to have treasurer.
Oh, and it does now and it always will.
I understand that.
Okay.
Just trying to get clarity.
Excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
Just trying to get clarity.
Yep.
I know that that position wasn't advertised, so I just wanted to find out why.
Nice. It um.
Can you?
Yeah, please, go ahead. I try, but.
What we're, what we're trying to do here is we, we, we put up for a finance director, okay?
Before we got the resignation.
Before we got the resignation. When we got the resignation, um we've still got that, that, that out there, but we're seeing what we get for applicants, okay? If we get to the point where we can't find that finance director, we may have to change it up. We don't want to change that up until we know where, what, how we're gonna roll this, so. It, it, with, with our treasurer resigning, which she did, kind of threw a monkey wrench in the whole deal. So we're just trying to straighten it all out, but I, I believe it'll work out. We will always have a treasurer on, um you know, we uh, we have one now and, you know, we've got Mark Roy and everybody else we're working with, but we are working on trying to find a full-time treasurer.
Just one question.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on on up, sir.
Yeah, I was just looking over uh Phil Caruso's um comments from last meeting. That's why I declined the first request. But um is there any thoughts as far as the town having a um interviewing for a town manager position that would encompass treasurer, finance? I mean, I know Jennifer is kind of our town manager and, and sounds.
So why wouldn't we ask for, or look for another town manager? We've already got one.
Cause that's not her title.
Well, I know it's not her title.
She's probably not being, she's probably not being paid as, as well as a town manager would be.
Nope, you're right.
But I mean, as far as uh actually having a town manager like other town managers do to, do what town managers do.
So what, what would be the advantage of a town manager?
Um department heads would um report into them, uh that town would.
They do that to our administrator now.
Excuse me?
They're already doing that to our town administrator now.
Okay, um but it would relieve a lot of the um, a lot of what the selectmen's do on a.
Selectmen still has to do the job. The selectman has to, the selectman's role in a town manager's position is the selectman telling the town manager what they're allowed to do. So what you've done is you've just taken her job, stepped up one notch, but still doing the same job.
Well, I'm not debating why or not there should be a town manager. Why do ninety percent across the United States of, of America, other towns have the actual town manager?
I think, I, I, I think that.
I mean, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just asking you why, why do we not have a town manager? This is, this is a question. I'm not, you don't have to get defensive.
It's a fair question.
Oh, no, I'm not getting defensive, am I?
Oh, I think you are, but.
Oh, am I?
Yeah.
Well, you're taking it the wrong way.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, well, because the thing is, is, you know, Jennifer does a lot for us. You, you're right, she, she, we probably shouldn't be talking about her pay or anything because it's a personnel thing, da, 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 but at the end of the day, um we, we, we just changed her job description to reflect, you know, what her job duties are, those departments having to, you know, deal with her, not us. Everything goes through her. Um, you know, I don't think there's any benefit to go to a town manager compared to what we have, because you, all you're doing is, we're pretty much doing that except without a title. Now, pay, yeah, you're right. Pay, at the end of the day, um we, you know, we're looking at all, all the positions and, and uh, and without going into any details, you know, yeah, obviously it's something we're looking into. Are there, but um, I mean.
I, I just don't feel we're big enough for a town, a town manager.
I, as I'm saying, I, it's my understanding, most smaller towns have a town administrator.
Yeah. Yeah.
There is a change, though, when you have a town manager.
Yeah.
A town manager would, I believe, had greater authority, much of which currently rests with the selectmen.
Yep.
And so they would be authorized to enter into contracts, do the bidding. That wouldn't necessarily, I don't think it would come to the board for approval.
No, you would need a five number working.
We would need a five. We just put in one up to five members.
No, right.
Makes it easy.
I don't know how many you'd need, but not five, and it would completely change our, our role. Um not completely, but substantially, and invest a lot of authority in a, in an employee as opposed to an elected official. So, you know, there are pros and cons and, you know, I appreciate the question, but I don't.
Town manager is a problem every week.
Yeah.
Well, as well, it'd be very expensive.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you're gonna pay more for it.
Yeah, you pay a lot of money for a town manager.
My second question is uh warrant, warrant at finance committee, what's uh, is there an application process or?
No, so all you gotta do, show up at town meeting.
Okay.
Um, no, what, what article is it?
Um two and three.
Two and three. Um they're gonna take nominations, have somebody nominate you. Um, you know, hopefully there's a bunch. Normally isn't. And um they're gonna get voted on. You're gonna have a secret ballot, right? That's a secret ballot for that.
Do, do, do those that are nominated usually speak and, and say a little bit about themselves or?
I mean, I know there's, there's been a year, there's been a year that I think that you asked for that to happen or someone did.
I would, I would really, I would really like to see somebody get nominated, stand up, wave.
And introduce themselves to.
And I'd rather not see people get nominated who aren't there.
Yeah.
That, that, because what that does, and I, I, it's fine if you want, the select board is stacked the finance committee, because that's what we, you know, in, in theory, what we could do. If people nominate people who aren't there, then they don't want the job, we, we fill those positions.
They appoint.
So don't do that.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Anybody else?
Oh, town reports, town reports, alright.
Oh, uh.
While he's coming up.
Yep, go ahead.
Town reports are here. They arrived from the printer end of last week. I wanted to make sure that the board got them first, but they'll be out first thing in the morning.
Hi, Steve, Steve Bike one six two East Shore Drive, Acton Main.
Yep.
Uh thank you for responding to my email. I appreciate it. So I, I missed the uh, the meeting here for about the proposed ordinance presented to you folks. I was there for the uh.
End work.
The, the planning board, I didn't think there was another one I had to attend. I was out of state and I missed it, so, but anyway. I really, really would wish you folks would take another look at that because it is extremely important. Because we do so much to protect the waterfront, cutting a tree, moving a rock. I had a neighbor.
Were we talking about the moron?
No, the dog.
No.
Oh, the dog, okay, okay. I'm, I'm sorry, I was lost there for a second. I know what you ordered, you were talking about.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have corrected.
Yeah.
So, but the bottom line is, why did the individual decide to do it? It's within fifty feet of my well, fifty feet of the water. My well had been damaged and it's, it's been a nightmare since July. Because I stopped monitoring it when she indicated, yeah, I did bury it there. What were you thinking? Well, the vet said it was okay. So now I don't know if the dog was euthanized or died of disease. If it was euthanized, it's phenobarbital that they use. That gets more intense as the year go by and other animals will die from it, never mind getting into the water system. So anyway, long story short is, I've spent over four thousand dollars between water tests, installing equipment in my basement, and having somebody come out, scrub off the tiles, chlorinate it, reseal it, and I'm gonna have to, have to come out every year to make sure that it's still good, that this stuff is still not coming in. And I, well, like I said, I, I don't blame it.
And they won't move the dog?
I have all this documentation from the state, but they don't want to enforce it. From the Department of Agriculture to the Department of.
Who won't enforce it?
They, they, they say a domestic animal doesn't apply. A farm animal does.
Yeah, a farm.
But, but it's like it doesn't apply, and I couldn't get the health officer to come out. Because there is a statute in here, eleven eighty-two, says that within fifty feet of your well, the, the health enforcement, uh the health officer can take action. She didn't want to come up. She wrote me a swag.
Well, and there's, I mean, there's a little more to it. I wanted to just say that she didn't want to come out, and they did correspond. We got him in touch with the health officer. And they, they corresponded. She got opinions from the state. She went above it.
And she said it was. And, and everybody has been telling me it's fine with the state. And they keep telling me, why doesn't your town have an ordinance? I said, I don't know. So that's when I started with the planning board. And then the planning board said, yeah, they probably should have something. And I said, well, you know, it's, the waterfront is extremely important to protect. And, and we have so many issues tomorrow right now. Like some on leaf, uh Chinese misery snails. Now, now there's the zebra mussels that are coming down.
A what?
Up, zebra mussels.
Yeah, I haven't heard of them.
Upper part of the.
Oh, yeah, they got them all over Mousen.
It, it, it's, it's, it's nuts.
Where are they getting this stuff from? Are they coming out boats or some?
Uh they come out of boats.
These are actually.
Oh, that's where they check the boats and stuff like that. That's why, that's why it's important.
So I mean, you've got to turn these lakes into swamps.
You know, sir, I, you probably, probably heard my opinion when I thought of this.
I wasn't it.
No, no, I, I made it very.
He thought maybe he watched it.
Yeah.
I watched two of them and it was like for over three hours and I never heard anything talked about, so I don't know which one it was on.
Oh, I don't know either.
Again, I was out of state.
I don't give you the data, good luck.
Yeah, so, you know, and I, I, this is kind of a crappy situation that you're in there. Um and uh honestly, this, I think this is probably more of a civil matter, sir. You know, if it's contaminating your well and you can prove it, I mean, that, that's, but when, when he, but when the planning board put that forward, um the reason why I didn't think it was a good idea was, you know, the enforcement part of it. I mean.
Well, that was easy. She identified it was there. I had the state, well, not the state, the deputy come down. I had documented that there's an animal buried there, that size. And all she had to do is go and force the government, say, get it out of here.
Uh. Yeah, I, I'd suggest, I'd suggest at this stage, warrant has been approved. I'm sorry, it's, I don't think it can be changed.
No, I'm not asking you to change it.
At this stage, I suggest you go to town meeting.
Yeah, that's what he.
Stand up when the warrant gets presented.
And that's where, that's where I asked.
And present your case and who, who knows how people will vote, but that's, that's the process.
Right. And that's all I'm asking for you folks to actually look at it, think, think about it, but, but talk to the uh, the uh planning board.
Well, the, the reason why I looked at it, there was things on there that I didn't like. When they put the resource protection area in there, I thought that was, that was a step too far, okay? When they, they added that on a part of it, because, you know, the town act is covering resource protection. If one, you know, buried fluffy the whole back, you know, I'm not gonna go to the town hall and see where the resource protection area is, like bury my cat. And so it, it gets into all that gray area, this and that. I just, I, I feel that the state doesn't regulate it for a reason. Why we want to get into that, I don't know, because I just don't see how we're gonna go out and make somebody unbury their animal.
I, I appreciate the email that you sent. I did respond and I shared my thoughts. I do, I do think it, it stinks that you had to invest so much time and effort into that and that's something that I wouldn't wish upon anybody. And I did share my concerns that I do think maybe there should be something on the books, but this particular ordinance I thought was too broad and vague and puts a bar. I do, I do think it, it stinks that you had to invest so much time and effort into that, and that's something that I wouldn't wish upon anybody, and I did share my concerns, I do think maybe there should be something on the books, but this particular ordinance I thought was too broad and vague, and puts a burden on so many people unnecessarily. Um so, like I said, I highly encourage you to, to, you know, talk to people around town and get thoughts and opinions and support that at town meeting, and if the town votes it, then that's the, the wish of the people, but.
Yeah. Because allegedly it was gonna dispense, or it has been dispensing, it's like fifty gallons, it's on a trajectory slope in sand, heading for my well. So if I hadn't been testing and I had a six-month-old baby, drank the water for, for a couple of days, it would die, that's how serious this is.
Yeah, I.
It's called the blue baby syndrome, if they drink this stuff that was contaminated.
Unfortunately, even if this passes, I would, if, if, but I, all I know is, if, if I had done that to you and I had buried my dog that close, it wasn't an issue.
I agree, yeah.
I, as much as I love my dog, I would have gone and, I would have moved that, and myself, even if this ordinance passes, it's already been done, so it wouldn't help out, what I would do is go see your lawyer, and that's just my advice.
Go and dug him up, yeah. Yeah, mitigate the problem. Yeah.
But I think.
If they rewrite that article.
And you know who it is, and that is.
I, I think the article was written differently, where it, it, just like you said, too broad, and I, I think it could be confined a little bit, maybe it would work, but the way it's written right now, there's a reason why I, I just think it's not good.
But I also appreciate you bringing that, cause I, in your email, I know you stated and throughout discussions, where it's not so much just gee, but you wanna make sure that nobody else has to.
Yeah, like I said, I couldn't give you a ton of information, and it was, would have been overwhelming, because I've been doing this with the planning boards since July of last year, and it's just, it, it's nuts, that, it's damage that it can do to your well, the waterfront, and you know, but the waterfront's paid a hefty tax compared to the, you know, the back lots and on the other side of the road, so it's like.
You know, sir, if I'm on a back lot, someone buried their dog next to my well, I'd do the same thing, right? So it really doesn't matter, I mean, whether or not.
Yep.
You, you can bury it on your well, it, it's in the state books.
What's that?
You can bury it i- in your property.
No, no, what I'm saying, if I'm on a back lot and I buried it next to your well, even though on a back lot, it doesn't make any difference on your shoreline or back lot, it's still gonna do the same thing, right?
I'm only going for waterfront, because not only does.
Yeah. I know, I just, I get tired of people talking on the special.
He's trying to say both of them are bad.
It's both bad, I just, I, I, I get tired of hearing, I'm on waterfront, I'm more important than the next guy, you know, so.
No, I. No, no. No, I'm not saying I'm more important, I'm just saying I pay more tax.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, you probably do, but, um, but the same way the dog is gonna contaminate the back lot too.
And I know, I know. Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Alright, so I'm gonna have a chance to bring this up at the town meeting?
Yep.
Because the folks, I'm, I'm sure it's in there, says that you don't, you don't approve it, you.
The recommendations are on there, yeah.
The, the recommendations are there, I, I don't think the select board will speak to the matter.
No, I'm not asking.
Those are already made, there'll be a motion on that warrant, and you'll have an opportunity to speak.
No, no. Right, because I just gotta make sure that the people in the town know that it's extremely important.
Yes. Yes.
So, are you a resident?
Yes.
Voter?
Yeah.
Okay, so you don't, well, what I asked, I could make sure, if you're a non-voter, we would have to, at the beginning of it, we, 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 we vote, have non-residents be able to speak, so.
Oh, it's your point. If you're not a resident.
Oh, oh, really?
Yes, I just wanna make sure if that was the case, you knew that, but, but if you're a resident, you're fine.
Yeah.
No, I didn't know that.
So the, if you're a property owner but not a resident, usually you're not allowed to speak, but sometimes they are.
I would just work. Okay.
We, we vote on it at the beginning of the meeting anyways.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
Did you have any other public comment, please? Okay, uh.
Oh, I, I just, I'm starting on a public comment, but I do just wanna give a shout out to Neighbors Helping Neighbors for their first Bean Supper this past Saturday, I heard nothing but positive feedback from the people who attended, who loved the idea, so many people said, is this something that happens all the time, they're really excited? So I just wanna shout out to everyone who volunteered, who made the food, helps it out.
Food was great, by the way.
It was, it was a great event.
I mean, the desserts, I don't know who made the whoopee pies, who made the whoopee pies?
Jen Cusson.
Yeah, there you go, everything was good.
Yes, they, I should have done that, thank you, Dan, it was, it was a good turnout, I mean, we served probably fifty people, so it was a good little turnout.
I feel better, I'm sure, cause I was out of town, so.
Yeah.
The beans were great, everything, everything was great, yeah, good people.
Beans were great, Tammy, Dan, Kravitz, then again, Stan, everybody, it's good.
Yep.
The interview, should we, we.
Oh, yes, I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I guess we've gone a little bit beyond, but we gotta go back to uh, Jen and I did a couple interviews today.
Yeah. Second round.
Second round of interviews today for uh the town.
Deputy Town Clerk.
Deputy t- Town Clerk, and uh, uh we've, we've got an individual we believe is, you know, good for the job, and we would like to uh go into negotiations with her, so I'd like to make a motion that we go into negotiations with candidate A, um.
And then the action will be taken at the, at the next board meeting.
Next week, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Enough, I'll second that.
I'll second, yeah. Hmm, all in favor? Sorry about that, okay, so we've gone through all that, public comment, I guess, uh do I hear a motion?
I move to adjourn at six thirty-seven PM.
Seconded, all in favor? That's, that's a quick one, and we started at six, it's one. So, okay, okay.